Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started with our business meeting. Today's date is September 9, 2025. The time is 2:01 PM. In attendance are Commissioners Everline Duncan and Matari. I'm going to call this meeting to order, and we will begin with a moment of silence. Okay, and next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Captain Smart, could I get you to lead us off, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, item thirty-one needs to be pulled. There's a publication that we need to do, and then item thirty-three, if we could handle that first, that would be helpful.
Okay, any objection? Hearing none. Okay, I will take a public comment. Yes, come on down.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I hope the following question can be answered when these items come up in the business one. On item number twelve, I see that for the fixed route and paratransit operation, that the Federal Transit Administration's contributing thirty thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars, and the in-kind match is identical, which is what I would expect. But why bring that up? It's when you look at item ten on the fixed route paratransit operations, the Federal Transit Authority's putting in roughly one point five million, and the in-kind match falls short by around three hundred thousand dollars. Who's paying the three hundred thousand, and where's it coming from? Hope that can be answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment? Anybody on the phone? No? Okay, we will move into meeting minutes. I'll take a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
I will second the movement for community development, zero eight twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, community development minutes.
I second that approval.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matari?
Aye. Consent calendar.
I move that we approve items two through seven.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matari?
Aye, and the payables list.
I move that we approve the payables for the week of September first through the fifth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of seven hundred and two thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents, along with jury panel payments in the amount of three thousand, eighty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matari?
Aye. Okay, thank you. Our first item will actually be number thirty-three, our business item, and that is FY twenty-six Extension Program Cooperative Agreement, and this is with the University of Idaho and the B O C C, and we have Leanna Kaiser speaking.
Leanna Kaiser, for the record. This is our annual agreement with the University of Idaho for their extension program, and financial support for this was approved in the FY twenty-six budget. It was a slight increase over the prior four years, I believe. There is one section that was added, which erroneously was removed when the university standardized the contract a few years ago, and we caught it this year. So we're putting it back in. It just allows them to use our reprographics department for printing.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion for FY twenty-six Extension Program Cooperative Agreement, University of Idaho, B O C C action.
I second that approval. Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is item nine. It's bid award, bid number RFQ, Admin HVAC Upgrade Project with our Building and Grounds and Director Jeff Voler, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. If you recall, on August twenty-six, we received proposals to select a construction manager, general contractor for the administration HVAC upgrade project. We received proposals from three qualified firms. We put together a rating committee to score those based off of the criteria outlined in the proposals. Geno Construction was by far the highest rated firm, and we would recommend approval and award to Geno Construction for the CMGC. Just as a note, we're just approving them to be selected as the GMC. We'll bring a full contract with a design fee as well as then working towards the guaranteed maximum price.
And that's to prove him as a general contractor?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion to a bid award, B I D, hashtag RFQ, Admin HVAC Upgrade Project, Building and Grounds.
And you want to add to that?
Yeah, the bid award is to Geno Construction, so I second that approval.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Next up is item ten, Grant Amendment ID dash two zero two-three dash zero two-two dash zero-two, Fixed Route Paratransit ADA Operations with the Federal Transit Administration in the amount of one million, five hundred and six thousand, six hundred dollars with an in-kind match from Kootenay Health and the Coeur d'Alene Tribe of one million, one hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars. This is with our Transit Department. And Mr. Engel, are you on the telephone?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Chad Engel with the Transit Department for the record. We are requesting authorization to proceed with an amendment to our existing grant in the FTA Award Management System. This amendment applies to our allocation of fifty-three oh-seven funds and has already been approved by FTA. Executing this amendment will allow us to access the approved funding. The funds included in this amendment will support fixed route and ADA paratransit operations. Additionally, the amendment extends the grant's performance period through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. The grant amendment was reviewed by legal and auditor's office. Both have returned it with no objections at this time.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, Chad, because the in-kind match is not fifty-fifty, what is the reason for the difference?
So part of the grant is eighty-twenty match, and the other part is fifty-fifty. So that's where you get the difference there.
Okay, so some of it's for actual buses, then?
No, uh-uh. It's still for operations. It's just that the federal government allows for a portion of it to be eighty-twenty.
Okay.
Any other questions? Motion?
I move that we approve Grant Amendment ID two zero two-three dash zero two-two dash zero-two.
Nay.
So that's not a second coming from you, Commissioner Everline?
No, it's nay.
Well, we discussed this this morning, and an explanation was given as to why we want to amend this grant, and so I will second this emotion.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
No.
Or a nay, nay.
Sorry.
Don't mean to tell you what to do.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Next up is Grant Administration number ID dash two zero two-four dash zero three-two dash zero-one. It's planning, Federal Transit Administration grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars with a cash match from the jurisdictions, which are the cities, of six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. And Mr. Engel?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Chad Engel with the Transit Department for the record again. We are requesting authorization to move forward with the grant amendment to our existing grant in the FTA Award Management System. This amendment relates to our allocation of fifty-three oh-seven funds and has already been approved by FTA. Executing this amendment will allow us to access the approved funding. The funds included in this amendment will support service planning activities and will also extend the performance period to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. The grant amendment was reviewed by legal and auditor's office. Both have returned with no objections at this time.
Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the Grant Amendment ID two zero two-four dash zero three-two dash zero-one, which is for planning with FTA in the amount of twenty-five thousand, nine twenty, cash match, six thousand, four hundred and eighty.
Nay.
Well, again, we discussed this. There is money in another grant, the CARES grant, but that does not explicitly apply for this particular planning function. So I will second the motion.
Commissioner Everline?
Nay.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Next up is Grant Award number ID two zero two-five dash zero two-three dash zero-zero. It's fixed route and paratransit operations with the Federal Transit Administration in the amount of thirty thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars with an in-kind match from the Coeur d'Alene Tribe and Kootenay Health of thirty thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars, a fifty-fifty match in the grant. And again, Mr. Engel?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Chad Engel with the Transit Department for the record. We are requesting the Board's authorization to execute a grant award in the Federal Transit Administration Award Management System. This grant application, previously approved by the Board, programs our allocation of fifty-three oh-seven funds for public transportation operations. The grant includes the fiscal year twenty funds that will lapse if not obligated through this award. It has been approved by FTA and is ready for execution, which is necessary to draw down the funds. The award has been reviewed by both legal and auditor's office.
Thank you. Questions?
No.
Motion?
I move that we approve Grant Award ID two zero two-five dash zero two-three dash zero-zero, which is the fixed route and paratransit operations, FTA amount thirty thousand, four hundred and forty-six, and in-kind match with Coeur d'Alene Tribe and Kootenay Health at thirty thousand, four hundred and forty-six.
Nay.
Mr. Engel, I'm going to second this motion, but I do hope that we can really focus on expending as much funds as possible, as quickly as possible. I know you've mentioned that before, so we can understand a little bit about this grant portfolio and all these grants that we're simultaneously managing. So I will second that motion.
Commissioner Everline?
Nay.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, Board Approval Request. This is to approve an expenditure for door security. This is with our Information Technology Department, and we have Grant Kinsey here.
Thank you, Commissioners. Grant Kinsey, Network Admin for the record. What this is, is we've just recently upgraded all of our electronic door systems throughout the county. That includes the JJC Courthouse downtown. And when the Juvenile Probation Department learned that we had upgraded it, knowing that we had an antiquated system that wasn't worth putting money in before, they approached us about securing four doors. The Board has asked that departments that are wanting any type of work like this done on the electronic door system, that they work through grounds and IT. So Director Voler and I have talked it over. We think the doors make sense to be secured. Funding source, my understanding is this will come from the tobacco tax funding that juvenile probation has access to. So everyone has talked and feels it'd be a good project to do, but we're just looking for the Board's approval to proceed with that.
Thank you. Questions? Just, these are for doors that would, in essence, restrict access from the general public to offices where people are conducting work.
Correct. Right now, there's a couple side doors to probation that can be accessed from a public through fare to the elevator.
Yeah.
And there's also, on both floors, that is the situation. So this would secure those doors.
Okay, great, thanks. If there's no other questions, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion for Board Approval Request, approve expenditure for door security information technology.
I second that approval.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item fourteen, Board Approval Request. This is a request for certification to twenty twenty-five property tax roll from delinquent personal property tax. This is with our Treasurer's Office, and can we do fifteen and sixteen together, do you think? Yes. Dave, do you think we can do fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen together?
Yeah, I see no reason why not, as long as Jill kind of explains what's happening with each of those items.
Can you do that?
Jill Smith, Chief Deputy Treasurer, and Deanne Reed, Treasury Specialist. Deanne will explain.
Okay, well, we'll start with item, well, item fifteen is a request for certification to twenty twenty-five property tax roll for inactive real properties, and then sixteen is a request for certification to twenty twenty-five property tax roll for delinquent commercial solid waste amounts.
Okay, so the first one, the personal property, are mobile homes that have not paid their taxes, and the mobile and the landowner are of the same owner. So we can move those taxes from the mobile to the land to certify. The second, which was inactive parcels that have been subdivided.
Mm-hmm.
We take the unpaid taxes and we move it from the parent parcel to the children parcel. And then the third is solid waste, which is fees from the solid waste department that were uncollected, that they have certified to the tax roll.
Thank you. Questions? What was the last, what was the last one? The last one was people who were not paying for the-
They don't pay their service. Their garbage service, solid waste.
Yeah, then that gets applied to the property.
Correct.
So I can do all three of those together, if you like.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I move that we approve the request for certification to the twenty twenty-five property tax roll from the delinquent personal property, the inactive real properties, and the delinquent commercial solid waste amounts.
Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Next up, item seventeen, Board Approval Request. This is a cancellation of tax on personal property, and it says real, which I assume would be include real property, and this is with our Treasurer's Office.
Yes, so these are accounts that are uncollectible at this time, where the property owner owns no other property within Kootenay County to certify to. So these are mobile homes that have been moved out of state, demolished or burned down, or just plain disappeared, that we cannot collect the taxes against at this time.
So this, we are canceling these completely. Okay, any questions?
Just what is the total amount? There's like no total on here.
I do not have the total in front of me.
Two thousand, three thousand, four thousand-ish, I think. I think it's between four and five thousand, as far as I'm just guestimating.
Does it help to list some aims out in the motion?
I don't know that we need to. It's part of the document that they'll use going forward. So it's all right. It's not that, not that important.
I will total those in the future for you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the cancellation of tax on the personal and real property as listed for the Treasurer's Office.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item eighteen. This is a Board Approval Request for Request for Certification to twenty twenty-five property tax roll for yield and deferred tax, again with our Treasurer's Office. And who would like to take this?
These are unpaid bills for harvesting. So if they've harvested their property and they haven't paid that yield bill, then we are collecting against that property. And then the deferred is if they've sold the property, and so we're collecting for those that have sold and gone out of the program.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Motion?
Board Approval Request for Certification to twenty twenty-five property tax roll for yield and deferred tax. Treasurer?
Second. Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matari?
Aye, and that was to approve that request. Next up is item nineteen. That's a Board Approval Request, and these are requests for certification to twenty twenty-five property tax roll from taxing districts.
So these are the water and sewer districts that certify to our tax roll for unpaid bills, whether it be an LID or an unpaid water or sewer bill.
Okay, questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion for Board Approval Requests for Certification to twenty twenty-five property tax roll from taxing districts. Treasurer?
I second that approval.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you all. Okay, next up is item twenty. This is to renew the contract, and we have a couple contract renewals, so I think we can do them together. That would be items twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. It's to renew a contract for chaplain services with Jackson Lanterman and Juvenile Probation, another contract mentor coordinator, Kim Bohorkes, Behorkes?
Behorkes.
And another contract renewal with Alternative to Suspension Program, Ron Francic. And they're all with Juvenile Probation, and we have our director, Brian Alexander, here.
Thank you, Commissioners. Brian Alexander for the record. Now, these three are annual contracts that we do every year. First, all three have been reviewed by legal with no issues. First with Jackson Lanterman is our non-denominational chaplain that goes into the District One Juvenile Detention Center, works with the youth as well as mentorship within the community and the detention center. And the funds for that position are paid out of the tobacco funds. Our second contract with Kim Behorkes is our new mentor coordinator. She took over a few months ago and renewing her contract for next fiscal year. Her job is to work with the community and get community members that who want to volunteer and work with our youth while in the community, as well as our group mentoring program with three oh-one. And those funds are paid out of lottery funds. And then finally with Ron Francic, that contract is with the Post Falls School District, where we provide the vehicle and fuel. The school district pays his funds and any insurance through the school district, and his job is to work with any youth at a post-falls school district who are suspended during the school year to help them do community service as well as keep up on their normal school activities. And then we'll move him like Mark Jones used to do. In the summertime, they do community events such as the community garden there in Post Falls. They work with the assisted living houses, serving food. So just a lot of community involvement with that program. And again, that's paid out of post-falls school district funds.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve or renew the contracts for the following. Chaplain services with Jackson Lanterman, mentor coordinator, Kim Behorkes, and our Alternate to Suspension Program, Ron Francic.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item twenty-three, Board Approval Request. This is the purchase, a two thousand twenty-five Ski-Doo Summit eight fifty with our Sheriff's Office and Sergeant Ryan Miller. Are you on the telephone?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Yes, Sergeant Ryan Miller for the record. This is, again, a request. This was in the twenty-six budget process. I would just like permission to purchase the two thousand twenty-five Ski-Doo Summit eight fifty with one hundred and sixty-five in tracks. This machine we found in stock locally in Coeur d'Alene. It's actually a thousand dollars cheaper than it would have been several months ago because they're trying to get rid of last year's model, and which is going to allow us to put that towards some of the equipment on it. So the total purchase is sixteen thousand, five sixty-seven, twenty-four. It's coming from the snowmobile funds, twelve, about twelve thousand, five hundred was dedicated from the general fund and forty-five hundred from the rollover account. We're going to be spending just under the twelve thousand, five hundred, but that additional almost five hundred dollars will be used for additional equipment we cannot purchase from the vessels.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion for Board Approval Request, Purchase Twenty Twenty-Five Ski-Doo Summit Eight Fifty. Sheriff?
I second that approval.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Do you want to do item twenty-five real quick, since he's on the phone?
Oh, well, I tell you what, let's, if it's okay, we'll just switch twenty-four and twenty-five. Keep you on the phone there, Sergeant Miller. Item twenty-five, Board Approval Request, Deep Tracker Revolution ROV Purchase with the Sheriff's Office. Sergeant Miller?
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, Sergeant Miller for the record. Yeah, this is, again, this was a planned purchase using the dedicated funds from the vessel account. We have plenty of funds in there still from this previous year. And if we, if we had more breakdowns or more issues with boats, we were going to scrap this, but since we ended up having some pretty good luck there, we're going to ask to purchase this Deep Tracker ROV to replace the current one that we have that is, it was purchased back in two thousand twelve. It would be about sixty thousand dollars. Plus, we would have to get the new software updated, so it would be a lot more expensive to go with the, it'd almost be ninety-two thousand dollars to go with the, the exact same models we have. So we've been testing out this other model, the Deep Tracker. There's one locally through a vendor, and we've done several missions on it, and it's going to do everything that we need to, but not say, spending the same amount of money. So the total cost of this is fifty-two thousand, six fifty and fifteen cents, and that is all, again, coming out of the vessel account.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the Deep Tracker Revolution ROV Purchase.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next up is item twenty-four, Commissary Agreement Amendment. This is with Summit Food Service LLC in our Sheriff's Office, and we have Lieutenant Nancy Ellis here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Lieutenant Nancy Ellis for the record. I'm here seeking approval for the FY twenty-six amendment to our Summit Food Services contract. It has already been reviewed by legal, and it reflects a five percent CPI increase.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion for Commissary Agreement Amendment, Summit Food Service LLC. Sheriff, Jaleh.
I second that approval.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Next up is item twenty-six, Board Approval Request. This is to award a badge, weapon, and ID card. Retirement of Deputy Matthew Cutler, the Sheriff's Office. I have Marcia Hegley, but under Sheriff Nelson, did you want to?
I'll take it from Marcia. Under Sheriff Brett Nelson for the record, Deputy Matthew Cutler is retired after seventeen years of service to the county and the community. Per, in accordance with statute, we're requesting his sheriff's badge, ID, and service weapon be provided to him.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the award of badge, weapon, and ID card for the retirement of Deputy Matthew, Deputy Matthew Cutler.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matari?
Aye, thank you. And on behalf of the Board, thank you for your service, Deputy Cutler. Motion carries. Next up, item twenty-seven, North Point Computer Software Renewal. It's Equivalent Corrections with the Sheriff's Office, Jaleh, and again, Lieutenant Nancy Ellis.
Good afternoon again. Lieutenant Nancy Ellis for the record. Good afternoon again. Lieutenant Nancy Ellis, for the record. I am also seeking approval for our North Point Suite Computer Software Renewal Program for FY '26. This program is used for our classification unit to classify and determine housing for our inmates.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion for North Point Computer Software Renewal Equivalent Corrections, Sheriff, jail.
I second that approval.
Commissioner Ebelin?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, KCSO Overtime Law Enforcement Agreement with Breakthrough T-1D is in Delta Ride, so Sheriff's Office, Patrol Division, and Captain Kevin Smart.
Thank you, Commissioners. Kevin Smart, for the record. This is a overtime contract for reimbursement for two units to be on traffic control along a bike route that goes from the Hayden area all the way up to Bayview and back around. Those units are just there to provide some traffic enforcement along the route as the bikers go along.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I make a motion for KCSO Overtime LE Agreement Breakthrough T-1D Ride, Sheriff, Patrol, Action.
I second that approval.
Commissioner Ebelin?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, Item 29, Board Approval Request. This is the FY '26 Longevity Pay with the Sheriff's Office, and again, Captain Kevin Smart.
Thank you, Commissioners. Yeah, just following up with our meeting from last week, and we're just looking to finalize the budgetary request for our longevity pay move, in that five-year movement from 15, 20, 25, down to 10, 15, and 20.
Thank you. Questions?
Just a statement. I will recuse myself from this vote because, again, I don't think that we're being shown the forest for the trees. This is another one of those situations. It's brought before us, and the long-term effects are not 100% known right now. There's unintended consequences, including one area of compression. And so while I don't disagree, I want to pay our guys. It's just not, everything's not known at this time.
Can you clarify that?
So we have one instance of that this is gonna cause compression. So likely, we'll be coming back with another request to fix the compression, and the long-term consequences aren't completely understood at this point.
Captain Smart, is, can you address the compression issue a little bit?
I guess I'd have to know a little bit about what specifically the compression is that Commissioner Duncan is referring to.
UnderSheriff-
Because we have had some, you know, components, and that's, that's one of these, is stretching a compression issue between the lieutenants and the captains.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Matarri? UnderSheriff Brett Nelson, to clarify the issue, the compression will lie with my pay. I'll have two of the three captains that will make more than I do based on this. I will tell you, this is not about me as an individual. It's about righting the ship for the future of the organization to ensure that we have the ability to promote and have the qualified individuals who want to promote within the organization by including the captains in the longevity pay.
Well, you know, I completely understand and appreciate your position on this. I think that we want to incent people to stick with the department as long as possible. And your situation is a little bit unusual in the sense that you had already served your time in another agency, wanted to continue to work at this agency, and so it would take you that amount of time to qualify for the longevity pay. But you went all the way up to the top operation spot. And so I see where that's an issue. I, I think it's something that the Sheriff's Office was aware of before they brought this. So I hope it's not an issue where we bring the trailer before the Board, and then we come back and say we need the vehicle for the trailer afterwards. But with that said, I do believe, and Lieutenant Sifford, you really, like I mentioned to you afterwards, kind of hit the nail on the head. When you are 20 years old and you're in the Sheriff's Office, 25 years from then, it seems like an eternity. It seems like it's so unattainable. It's like, yeah, yeah, whatever, sure. It'll never happen. Of course, it does happen. We end up being that age. We just may not be at the same department. I think moving it to 15, or I'm sorry, 10, 15, and 20 is the right move. And after that, we'll just maybe look at the undersheriff's pay, but I think, you know, it was something that was known. And so I hope that the Sheriff's Office doesn't come back to say, well, we did this, and now we need the vehicle for the trailer. So I'm, I'm for it. Do you want to make a motion, Commissioner Ebelin, or do you have any comments on that?
Well, I'm, I'm kind of concerned about compression. So I would say nay.
Well, the only compression is gonna be with the undersheriff's office. Or the undersheriff's position, excuse me.
So your, your position only, is that correct?
That's correct. And I will speak within the county itself. We already have another compression issue within another entity within the county wherein a subordinate makes more. So I would take it to the fact that I don't have a problem with it, understanding that these two gentlemen, my two captains, have paid the price, if you will, within this organization. And again, if you will, my belief is setting it right, the record straight for promotional abilities within the organization for years to come.
So I'll make a, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to, for a Board Approval Request, FY '26 Longevity Pay Sheriff Action.
Since Commissioner Duncan recused herself, I will second that motion.
Commissioner Ebelin?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan has recused herself, and Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Next up, Item 30, Board Approval Request. This is a voice stress analyzer, end-user licensing agreement with the Sheriff's Office. And again, Captain Andy Deek, I have you listed for this. Is there a different?
Yeah, I'm on the line.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Captain Deek, please go ahead.
Yeah, good afternoon, Commissioners. Captain Andy Deek, for the record. Before you, I've got a end-user licensing agreement for our voice stress analyzer. Legal recommended that it go before the Board because there is a contractual agreement for the authorized use of it. We're purchasing software and hardware. It's a single unit that will reside in one office. We are, as part of this purchase, there are two of our staff members that will receive training, but we've got to get this agreement to them in order to enact the order and, and provide the training, which will probably be done sometime around December to February for the training. But we're, this is the first step to get the agreement signed and off to the company.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the request for the voice stress analyzer and sign the end-user licensing agreement.
Second.
Commissioner Ebelin?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
I want to say one thing.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Just regarding Item 29, I think that really the appropriate is abstain instead of recuse. Recuse is kind of a-
That's fine.
Yeah, so abstain.
I misspoke. Sorry.
Well, actually, you first said recuse.
I, I think I said recuse.
Oh, okay.
But sitting here thinking about it, abstention is a better thing than recuse. So-
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, because you don't have a vested interest in it yourself.
Correct. Yep.
There's no conflict.
Correct.
Unless you're getting longevity pay.
I am not.
Okay.
Although hazard pay.
Well, on some of these public hearings, I would argue hazard pay is appropriate. With that said, we'll move on to Item 32, Quick Claim Deed, Former ITD US 95 Right-of-Way with Venue Properties LLC. And with our Prosecuting Attorney, Civil Division, we have Pat Braden here.
Yes, Pat Braden, Civil Deputy Prosecuting Attorney, for the record. Up on the screen, I have a graphic showing the property that would be conveyed. It's in the, kind of the off-white color. It's about a 1.6 acre property that, for the longest time, has been part of ITD's right-of-way. They, they've released their interest to the neighboring property owner of Venue Properties LLC, which owns both of the properties that are in red that are zone commercial. But in a title, title search that was done, the county came up in the, in the title search as having an interest in the property. And what, what this would do would just quickclaim that interest to the neighbors of Venue Properties LLC, and in so doing, avoiding potential litigation in the form of a quiet title action.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the quick claim deed, former ITD US 95 Right-of-Way with Venue Properties LLC.
Second.
Commissioner Ebelin?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we will save the best for last here. Item 34, although I would argue public comment is probably the last item. But number 34, East Side Fire District Annexation, Multiple Properties with the B OCC, and we have David Ferguson here.
Commissioners, it looks like four property owners applied for annexation of their properties in the East Side Fire District. It's the Thor Finson property, the Wright Living Trust, Ackerman Living Trust property, and Bogachev property. The Fire District held a duly noticed public hearing and approved annexation of those four properties into the Fire District. The properties all lie contiguous to properties that are already in the Fire District. So like I said, I reviewed the application packet, and those four properties do qualify for annexation.
And do you want the AIN numbers included in the motion, or just a general motion is fine?
A general motion would be okay. And if you want to name the property owners, I think that'd be helpful.
You can do that.
Okay. All right. Then I'll take a motion unless there's questions.
I'll make a motion for East Side Fire District Annexation, Multiple Properties B OCC.
Including Thor, Thor Finson property, Wright Living Trust property, Ackerman Living Trust property, and Bogachev property. Second that approval.
Commissioner Ebelin?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, David. Next up is-
Thank you.
Public comment. Would anyone like to speak? Everybody on the telephone. 2:43. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.